I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We got a whole front row here. I swear that we've all bathed. You're all welcome to come up. Nobody, still, even as grownups, nobody wants to sit in the front row. Thank you, Michael.
He's always our standout.
Thank you. All right. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ingalls, roll call.
Mrs. Duttweiler.
Present.
Mr. Hooley.
Yes, here.
Mr. McCartney.
Present.
Mr. Votak.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Can we take a moment for silent prayer and meditation? Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the May 13th, 2025 agenda?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votak.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2025 regular meeting and April 17th, 2025 work session?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Duttweiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooley.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votak.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to section four. It's time for the superintendent report. Tyler, did you turn the recording on?
Thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you.
To our board, we have a full agenda tonight, lots of progress to report, several exciting recognitions and presentations, and one presentation from our high school and one presentation from our treasure, so I know that you're excited to see and hear about the great things that are going on. Last week, we had our Teacher Appreciation Week, and it was really special to be in front of our teachers on Tuesday, May 6th, for that Professional Development Day, and thank our teaching staff for, you know, just the daily work that they do impacting our students' lives. I wanted to commend Mrs. Quick in the Teaching and Learning Department. They put in significant and relentless planning and purpose for this day, and all of it was about elevating our teaching and learning across the district, so I wanted to thank you, Mrs. Quick, and your team. The work that was the focus on Tuesday was our multi-layered approach, meeting the students where they are, and so I feel that this was setting the tone going into next year so that everyone feels a little bit more prepared so they can reach our students and we can continue elevating our teaching and learning across the district. So last Tuesday was a high emotion day with this professional development. There was an outstanding band concert. We hosted our first track meet in several years, and then the results of the bond issue, so a lot of emotions there. It's been a week since those results. You know, after much processing and reflecting, I feel like, you know, our central office is in a better place to understand that we need to do a little bit or a lot more work engaging and communicating with our community because we heard the community and it was, you know, a split decision on this, so we have some more work to do. There is this bond issue agenda item later in our agenda, but since we have such a great audience with us this evening, I wanted to provide an opportunity for the board. If anyone just wanted to make a comment now, because I'm worried that we'll have 90% of everyone leave, then we're going to have this discussion. We can do that, but you don't have to. Then I also just wanted to mention, we received from Steve Hamon and Paul about an hour and a half ago, our ELP numbers, which is, it's on the agenda tonight, even though the figures just came in. This is that state credit that we also want our community to know that in order to be able to take advantage of this, we do need to get this bond passed. So I didn't know if we wanted to have a short comments from the board about that at this point, but we don't have to. So I'll leave it up to you, and then I'll continue on with my report.
Well, since there are a lot of people here, I do have something I'd like to say. We had discussed potentially having an open forum where the community can come in and ask questions directly of the board members, and we are planning on setting that up soon. So I would ask for you to pay attention. We will do our best, if we do this, when we do this, we're going to communicate with the entire community, not just the school district, and we'll post it on social media so that everybody can know when it is and show up, and it likely June.
We can do this early June and do it again before the next election, whenever the board decides to put this on the ballot again.
And really, it's just an effort for us as a board to hear what the comments are and learn from the community. And if there are simple things or things that we can directly answer, we will answer. If we have to go back and get more information, we'll just say, we need to research that a little more, but we want to have a dialogue. We want to hear you. So if you could spread the word on that, to be looking for that, that would be great.
I'm hoping to have a date by the end of tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Anyone else want to comment, or would you like to just discuss that state credit quickly before I move on? I think it's crucial to understand.
I would just like to say real quick how impressed I was with our committee and the work of this district. I mean, really, when you look at how the other bond levies in our central Ohio did, they were beat two to one. We needed, if we had 16 more no votes who voted yes, we'd pass that. Now, that was an enormous amount of work that our PAC did and our board did, our staff did, and so, you know, it might not have got the result that we wanted, but it was a heck of an effort, and I'm really proud of our group and what they did.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as far as the state credit goes, there was, I did see some comments on social media and heard some things about, like the auditorium, for example, which we desperately do need. But this board had decided, if we pass the bond issue, we then get a credit from the state based on prior agreements that were made, and that money comes from the state once we pass the bond issue. So that money is going to be used for an auditorium. We, as a board, decided, rather than to add an additional $12 million to the bond levy, we will take the money, the refund money, from the state and earmark it for an auditorium. Otherwise, the bond itself ask would have been higher than it was, and we didn't want the community to shoulder that additional tax money. So I think that kind of got a little bit lost in the messaging, but it's really hard. No, from our perspective, I read the comments. I know what people are saying. It's hard to respond to a social media post that makes a one-sentence claim in one sentence in return, and it's, a lot of the stuff just takes, it takes back and forth. It takes dialogue to explain things in detail. So that's why we want to have an open forum and be able to have a conversation with people so they can understand these things. We want to build an auditorium. That is a priority, and we're hoping to do it with the state money, which we will get when we pass this bond levy.
Just for clarity, it wouldn't, it's not when we pass, we're entering into an agreement. It's called an expedited local partnership. So what that means is, the district, our community, funds the construction. We partner with OFCC, which is the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, and through a prior agreement from 2002, the district, the state funds 54% of the project and...
Right?
Fifty-four percent.
Fifty-four percent.
Of the junior high.
Of the junior high project, and locally, we fund 46%. But the way that OFCC works, it's on a cycle, and so you have to get in line. We won't be in line for probably somewhere between two and, well, to enter into the ELP agreement, you have to be at least two years away. So we're at least two years away from getting into the program right now, but somewhere between probably two and six years is when our number would be up, that we would be eligible for, to take advantage of state credit if we built at the time that they were ready. And so instead, what we've decided to do is to move forward with funding the entire project with local, 100% local dollars, and then once our number comes up for the ELP agreement, then we would have the option to receive a state credit in, as a percentage that the state calculates, which, when we did this two years, when we did this, started this eight months ago, 12 months ago, it was going to be $14 million based on current construction cost and current enrollment growth. The number has grown to $17 million. That number will just continue to grow over time as, because every, as we delay, construction costs go up, our enrollment goes up, all of which drives up that state credit. And then also, you know, since we're saying comments here, the, if, I know, I know a concern is cost, but we're talking $70 million. If you even, historically, construction costs go up 5% a year, okay? So even a delay from May until November, just rough numbers, you're talking 2.5%, right, in six months, 2.5% on $70 million, that makes this same project go from $70 million to $72, it's a $2 million increase in inflation, just in six months, if we pass it in November. My point to the community is, we're not stopping growth. Costs are going up. Enrollment is going up. I mean, I, we have to come up with some sort of, I don't know what the solution is, but we have to come up with a solution, and this, even if we vote it down again, the district has no means to stop the growth. Homes are coming, kids are coming, we have to have a place to educate the students that are coming into our community. So this board is committed to working with the community to figure out what that looks like, but stopping, this board is not in a position to stop growth. That is not an option.
100%. I, my regret is that we didn't do as good a job as we could have done to inform the community about some of the things that I think were deeply misunderstood. Number one, that I saw the signs in opposition to the levy as a JA growth tax. Believe me, nobody on this board is welcoming development into our district or encouraging development into our district just so we can build another building. If you want to complain about development in the district, this is not the body to complain to. Your township trustees, your county commissioners, your village council, those are the people who make those decisions. The other thing that I think people didn't understand is that when we pass a bond levy to build a building, the amount of the bond is fixed, but the number of people in the district is not fixed. Obviously, new people are going to move into the district. I know nobody likes to pay taxes, but as new people move into the district, you will pay a smaller share of that bond every single year as new people move into the district. So I could go on and on and on about the merits that we have for this building. We were very careful in our asks to keep it as low as we possibly could. One final thing I would note today, in preparing for my job, I read a lot of local media sources. Upper Arlington built a new high school in 2019, and they said they're trying to determine whether they want to build three new middle schools or whether they want to remodel their middle schools. And the story that I read today noted that if Upper Arlington had to build that high school today, the cost would be 80% higher than it was six years ago. 80% higher. So every year that we delay, the amount that it's going to require to do what we hope to do to give our students an optimum educational experience is going to increase.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate all of those comments, and we'll take time at the end of the meeting to, I guess, determine next steps and some dates and some special meetings or forums. Well, sorry, Mr. Lester, you're going to have to follow that heavy message there, but hopefully, really, everyone in this room should have seen a welcome, a welcoming email from me to Mr. Lester, our new Director of Operations and Construction Projects. If you would, stand up, just let everyone know who you are. If you haven't met all the board yet, this is Mr. Lester. His wife is with him, Jesse Lester. So I would just like to share with the board that this wasn't an easy process that he had to go through. This is an actual two-part process that I've never done before, where I had two separate committees, a classified and a certified committee, because I wanted to make sure that we had the right person. I had transportation leader, our foods leader, myself, Mark, and Tyler Jester sat through the first to find our top candidates, and then I stepped out of the interview process, and so did Mr. Ingalls, because I wanted a different voice. Mr. Jester sat in because I wanted to make sure that there was consistency amongst the process. We created emergency scenarios and different challenges that this person would be faced with. I put Mr. Lester in front of all of our directors and our assistant superintendent, and he rose to the top unanimously. So that's how I can confidently say to the board, he's our next person, but he's going to be a great fit with our administrative team as well, too. He's a servant leader. He wants to support our coordinators and lift them up so that they can be better at the work that they're doing. But maybe the greatest thing about this was he was coming to Jonathan Alder regardless. He broke ground in a subdivision right down the street, so he was going to be raising his family here anyway, so I know that we've got him hooked. So welcome, welcome to the team, Mr. Lester. Did you want to make any comments?
Not right now.
Okay, Mrs. Walker, with your permission, I'd like to move on to commendations.
Please, and welcome, Mr. Jester.
So we have a tall student with us, Evie Wilcox. I got to meet Evie. Where are you, Evie? If you would, come on up, and you can maybe stand up there by Mr. Votak, and we're going to hold this up for you. I was privileged to meet Evie back on April 23rd. She was recognized at this special associate school board dinner. Now, I didn't get to hear the write-up on her, so those that were here, if you want to mention anything, that you can, but she was recognized for her outstanding accomplishments in pharmacy science. She'll be competing in this national event next month that could extend her opportunity for pharmacy careers and practices across the nation. She will be attending Ohio Northern in the fall. We're just really proud to recognize you for your accomplishment and representing Alder, Evie. So thank you so much. I wanted to do a photo op and bring her parents up and a photo op with the board, if you would, but I'd like to give Evie a big round of applause. Come around here, Evie in the front.
And Evie is a state champion. She won the state championship competition, the number-one pharmacy student in Ohio.
All right, here we go, in three, two, one. Got it.
We think so, too.
Could you just give, give everybody just a quick rundown of at HOSA, kind of what the process is for competition?
Sure, so we have different stages. It starts with locals, of course, so for my competition, I had to take a test and perform a skill. So we start with those tests and perform the skills, and top 10 move on to regionals. So then you have to take another test, and the top 10 from the test go on to perform the skill, and it just goes on and on like that. So I was top 10 in my test at regionals, and then got top three at regionals to move to states, where I got top 10 in my test and first place at states, which means I'm going to nationals, which I will have to be another test, another skill, hopefully get top three for a scholarship there.
What program are you doing in?
Six-year program at Ohio Northern.
Yes, I'm doing the six to, or zero to six program at Ohio Northern, so I'll get my doctorate in pharmacy in six years.
Evie, when is nationals?
Nationals is June 18th through the 21st.
And where is that?
It's in Nashville, Tennessee.
Awesome. Well, on behalf of the whole board and the district, great luck to you.
And we want to say thank you because we wouldn't have been able to afford for her to go on our own, so the school was great.
Well done, Evie. Okay, with us from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators, Dr. Hornberger, if you would, come on up, and I, you're going to recognize all of Plain City Elementary, but especially the outstanding leadership of Principal Savage and Assistant Principal Hamon.
Am I okay over here?
Yes, please.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you so much for having me. I'm Becky Hornberger. I'm the Executive Director of OAESA, which is our Principals Association here in Ohio for prepaid through grade eight, and we recognize Hall of Fame schools each year, and I'm so excited to be here tonight to recognize Plain City Elementary. So a bit more about the process. Each year, OAESA celebrates elementary and/or middle-level schools that provide truly outstanding educational opportunities to their students through effective programming and instruction. These schools are characterized by an atmosphere of growth, achievement, pride, and a dedication to excellence on the part of staff and students. This rigorous selection process begins in the fall, when a school is nominated by someone who notices great things going on there. The school team then completes an extensive 15-page application, which is read in the blind, by a panel of principals from across the state of Ohio. This committee of practitioners then chooses, selects schools to move on to the visitation stage. Of over 2,500 elementary and middle-level schools in the state, only 11 were awarded recognition as a Hall of Fame school. This year, we are thrilled to recognize Plain City as one of these schools. I'd like to share what their visitation team had to say about the great things they saw there during their visit. So they said, "Plain City Elementary is a school where strong community roots, a student-centered focus, and a culture of positivity come together to create an outstanding learning environment. From the moment you enter the building, it's clear that social-emotional learning is embedded into the fabric of the school through signage, daily routines, and student choice. The Energy Bus Initiative has helped cultivate a shared uplifting mindset that empowers both students and staff. Under the leadership of Head Principal Kathy Savage, Plain City Elementary feels like a family. Her collaborative approach, along with the support of Assistant Principal Adam and the leadership team, has created a space where students thrive and teachers are supported." Despite recent transitions, the administration is working with intention to strengthen leadership systems and continue building cohesion amongst the staff. Academically, classrooms are active and student work is proudly displayed, reflecting a focus on engagement and growth. The school's efforts to support every learner, including English learners, are commendable. At the same time, PCE remains committed to refining its differentiation practices to meet the needs of all students. With forward-thinking planning, a deeply involved community, and a culture of continuous growth, Plain City Elementary exemplifies excellence. It is with pride that we recognize PCE as a 2025 OAESA Hall of Fame school. Congratulations. We're actually providing just kind of a stand-in certificate for now, so Kathy and her team will be honored at the conference on June 16th here in Columbus, and they will receive a beautiful plaque to display in their hallway, so congratulations.
You guys, why don't you come over here? Let's do a picture for the website.
Oh, no, you should be careful.
Congratulations. All right, I'm moving them. I'm over here now. All right, three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you. Yes. Great.
Congratulations. Beth.
Oh, good job. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, now I'd like to recognize and commend our Food Services Department. Between preparing healthy meals for students, adhering to strict nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and offering service with a smile, our school cooks are the true heroes. I'd like to call this group up, if you would, as well, too. You can kind of position yourself over here, and I would like the board to recognize you, and I'm going to call on Lori after I read a couple of things. Don't be shy, come on up. So School Lunch Hero Day is celebrated on May 1st, and I can't just tell you enough, I don't get through the lunch lines enough, but every single time I do walk through, this group is really serving with a smile every day to our children and meeting the needs, and hearing from the staff and the parents and just trying to serve our customers the best that they can, and our customers are our students and our families, so I can't thank you enough. Something else that I want to mention to Lori Robbins, I know the board remembers this, but let me just, you know, reemphasize, Mrs. Robbins' first year leading this department was this year, and we had some hard conversations in the summer because we had the confidence in Mrs. Robbins to do this, but we're also asking her to take on a lot. As soon as she accepted this leadership role, then she, we were all hit from the state with three significant audits, and good thing she was already in contract, she wasn't going anywhere. With the, with the help of Mr. Ingalls, they were able to successfully get through these audits, but I want to mention something else. How they did this with about 40%...
Don't take away my thunder.
Oh, okay. Then I'll, I'll let you go ahead.
No, no, I agree.
40% of her team, 35% to 40% of her team is new, so she's teaching, leading, guiding these other leaders, and they got the work done, so that speaks volumes about you, Mrs. Robbins. So, all right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, so it has been a very challenging year for food services. I wrote some notes down just so I wouldn't forget, but in addition to getting used to a new food service director, which I know is a challenge, every kitchen has faced staffing challenges this year, shortages. We are a department of 13, and out of our department of 13, we have hired to fill nine vacancies this year. We have transferred, two people have transferred within the department, and one person has been promoted, so there were a lot of changes this year. There have been 15 days out of this entire school year where we have had every position filled, and nobody has been on extended leave. That's it, 15 days out of the entire school year, and yet, these guys are getting the job done. They are supporting each other. I'm trying to get my shit on with this. They are supporting me, and they are doing it, so they're helping each other so that everybody that's here wants to be here and so that they can serve our students, and they're doing a great job of it. Hopefully, most of you guys saw the video that Tyler put together. The comments from the kids are that they're welcome, and the kitchen is friendly, and they don't notice the staffing issues because, you know, it would be easy to take all that out, and the kids would be frustrated, and they're not seeing that at all, and the numbers are proving it. From September to April of this year, if you guys don't notice, we have served over 5,000 worth lunches this year, to the same time last year, and we have served almost 2,000 worth breakfast during that same time this year than we did last year. So you guys have a lot to be proud of. Thank you for all that you've done, and you are the heroes, so thank you, guys, thank you for recognizing.
We should say something about Lori. She stepped in when she probably didn't want to, and she's doing a wonderful job.
She really is.
Yep.
Can you go a little further back? Yeah, this works. I gotta, okay, ready. Bruce, two, a little bit to your right. There we go. All right. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. 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 Mr. Hayes, Principal Hayes, I know you have a couple students and staff, if you wanna...
So, I can introduce to you Mrs. Nurk, Max Lewis, Anna Cardone, Mackenzie Roush, and Ella Ackles, and they are going to talk to you about our freshman career day that we had. It involved a field trip and a day here at the high school. So, I'll let them, I'll let them talk.
Yeah, I'll start. So, I am Mrs. Nurk, Holly Nurk. I am a satellite teacher from Tolls, and I get the privilege of working in this building. It really is truly a privilege in Jonathan Alder School District. I have 20 years of experience at Tolls, and then I'm here, and I just love being here. The kids are gonna talk about the freshman future-ready day that we did this year for the first time, and it was really a success, and I'm just gonna let them talk about it. They're really nervous. I told them that they had no reason to be, they wanted to be behind the podium, I did not tell them that I had to be, but that's their choice. Go ahead, Max.
So my name's Max, I'm a freshman here at J.I. When I was asked by Mrs. Nurk to talk about the, the change in like Ready and Inspire Field Trip, I was actually really happy because you can ask my mom, I came home and talked to her about it, I really loved the field trip. One of the main reasons I liked it, and it was very beneficial, was because of the variety and choices we had. Here at the high school and at the Inspire Field Trip, we got to walk around with our friends freely, and we got to go to stations that we liked and looked appealing to us. I think that really like made a difference, and we didn't just have somebody like speaking to us and handing us a paper to read off of. Another huge part that me and my peers loved were the close-up demos and interactive pieces that they had going on. They had a lot of stuff they would show us, and a lot of stuff we actually got to do. I think another big part was every stand, almost every stand had stuff that they would hand out to us. And I thought it was really cool when I was there, and I liked all the stuff, but as I got home, I kinda, I kinda realized why they did it, and that was because any time I look at the little fidgets they gave us or whatever, I think about that day, and I think about what's available to me in my future, and in like very, few very short years, I will be needing to make those decisions, so it makes me think back every single day, and every time I look at those souvenirs they would give us. Overall, I think the day was very beneficial, and it really helped me and my peers put into perspective how it's gonna be and what really is available to us as we go on. Thank you.
I'm a freshman, I'm Anna Cardone, and although the going to see all the different careers was really fun, my favorite part about it was probably here at Jonathan Alder, when we got to meet like the panel. The panel was five or six different people that had graduated from Jonathan Alder. Some graduated and went to college, some went into the military, and some went to Tolls, and then into Crewe. We got to ask them questions about what they're doing now, and what they experienced during high school. I really liked this station because it gave me an inside look on what my future could look like, given the fact that they all majored in Jonathan Alder. And, like, it's odd because they all looked like really familiar, like I knew some of them, so it was like interesting seeing people I know growing up.
Now you know how your parents feel.
But I thought it was really cool, and I am glad I got to see them again. Thank you.
My name is Mackenzie Roush, I am currently in the ninth grade. One of my favorite things I've done all year is having the opportunity to learn how to explore, explain, and understand things in the job industry. We had a station during the morning at Jonathan Alder High School where we learned about the higher domain of jobs near us. How to create an elevator pitch where you summarize your life in a sentence, and then after, tell them all of your qualifications. After that, you proceed to tell them your goal, and how to seem more prepared at a job interview, as well as having a set plan.
Hi, my name is Ella Ackles, I'm a freshman at Jonathan Alder High School. Recently, my classmates and I visited the Junior Achievement Inspirement at the Ohio Expo Center. We got to experience hands-on experiences that would eventually connect to a career pathway later on. There were stations set up all around the center, like Max said. Each station had something that you could take with you, or just like look at and go back. I really liked the ones where you got to perform tasks, so like one of them was a construction, and you got to place a block with cement, that was a lot of fun. I also remember the nursing station where you got to perform CPR and like take blood. I liked being able to see all the different types of careers that have been in the world, half of mine I know existed. And the visit helped inspire me to look further into the careers that interested me and keep my options open. Overall, I liked being able to see all the careers options and learning about each career as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Nurk, thank you so much. Mr. Hayes, thank you. Guys, I can't thank you enough, what confident speaker, so I appreciate you being here this evening. Stick around as long as you want, and thanks for arranging this, Mrs. Nurk.
No problem, thank you.
I just want to say, Max, Erica, Mackenzie, Ella, we love hearing about anything that impacts our kids. It is 10 times better when it comes from you guys. And I'm really glad you had the great experiences that you did. Thank you for sharing it with us, and thank you for sharing it with us eloquently. Yeah, proud of you guys.
Okay. Have you seen it? Yeah. Now we're, now we're into the business section of the meeting, so if, if everybody wants to...
They took their own cue.
Yeah.
You're allowed to stay if you want.
This is the exciting part, this is... You can leave, Mr. Lester.
Yeah.
He says, "I know, he says, 'I know who's paying my checks.'"
This is gonna be fun, Lester and Jester.
Lester and Jester, yeah.
Okay, great.
Do you want to do a presentation?
We have another presentation.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Well, I thought that you're...
Five-year forecast.
I was skipping ahead to your report. I do want to hear your five-year forecast. I just thought we were gonna hear it later, I got mixed up. My apologies, Mark, I'm sorry. Yes, go.
So, I already cleared the room. Well, so, yeah, so anyway, I'm Mark Ingalls, I'm the treasurer here, I see a lot of familiar faces, maybe one or two new ones. So, some of you guys have seen this presentation before, I have switched it up a bit, so it won't be the same as, as before. I do really want to quickly, again, shout out the Food Services Department for all the great work they do. You know, just to give you an idea of the type of service they're providing, last year they served over 229,500 meals, and each of our five buildings, and as of today, they're up at 209,291, a whole month ago, so they are definitely on pace to eclipse that number. They are one of the hardest-working folks in our building, so we want to appreciate them.
I forgot to say when they were here, they even serve hot lunches when we don't have electric.
Yes, they do.
I mean, come on, they're killing it.
So, I just want to get this out of the way, I know we talked about the bond issue earlier today, earlier in the meeting, but bonds are not part of this forecast, we cannot use any bond proceeds for operating. The five-year forecast just deals with operating dollars, so when I say operating dollars, that means the money that's used to pay our bills, to pay our teachers, to pay our staff, to pay our, pay our lunch ladies. It does not include debt payments, or construction costs, or anything like that, that's considered separate, so I'm not gonna be touching on the last week's results in this presentation, just want to get that out of the way. For those of you who are new, the five-year forecast serves several purposes, the most important being to gauge the board of education on our financial picture and where we're headed. It also serves as a basis to allow me to sign contracts with our teachers, with our classified staff, with our vendors, to provide services to our, to our students. Basically, if the forecast shows that we can't afford the contract, I can't sign it, or get fined, and I don't want that. It also provides a method for the high department of education and the auditor of state to keep an eye on school districts, so they can intervene when they need to, and hopefully catch problems early, so it doesn't balloon into a fiscal emergency situation. So I'm gonna talk about two key line items, revenue and expenditures, just right off the bat, I'm gonna be focusing a lot on the revenue side in this presentation for reasons that will be apparent soon. Talk about the local and state funding side, and then when they get into the expenditures, about our personnel and Food Services. So I just want to make clear that I'm, by law required to forecast out five years. The TV weather guy, it only has to do 10 days, and so when you get further out of the forecast, the fuzzier it gets, so it doesn't discredit, you know, our attempts to forecast out to five years, but just keep in mind that there's lots of significant events that can happen between now and 2029, which would have a major impact on this forecast. When those come to our attention, we will file amended forecasts, we have to do this twice a year, to make sure that we capture the most current data as is available. This year, however, is the fuzziest, unclearest picture we've ever had. There's a lot of reasons for this, at the state level, that can impact our state revenues and our local revenues. So, when I'm putting out this forecast for the board to approve, and again, this is the board's forecast, using the data that we have today, so the laws are in place today. I'm not taking into account the laws that are being discussed at the State House that could impact our state or local funding, I can only use what I know today. As the state budget comes clear, and we know what's gonna be in it, then we'll start making adjustments to our forecast as appropriate. So getting to our revenues, you know, we've been pretty consistent, you know, local and state split, about two-thirds local, third state, definitely projecting that to continue going forward as things stand today. However, that can easily change by the end of June, when we get the state, the final state budget. This is our reaction when we saw the governor's proposal, and especially when we saw what the House decided to do with it. So, I'm gonna get into the details of what's being proposed, again, I cannot model what they may do, but just so you know, this is why there's a lot of uncertainty in this forecast today. I really don't like Texas, slide, slide, slide tax, but, so the governor's budget, it called for $103 million less expenditures for public schools, so that would have resulted in about $400,000 cut to Jonathan Alder under the governor's proposal. The main, main reason for that is because we're on what's known as a funding guarantee, and the governor proposed eliminating those guarantees. Those guarantees are there for schools of declining enrollment, so that they cannot, so they cannot fall below a certain level of state funding. However, for us, we have increased enrollment. Reason why we're in that guarantee is that as our local wealth has gone up, we're expected to pick up more of the share. So, our share of the, of the, of the formula puts below that floor in that guarantee, and because of that, we would have gone to lose state funding under this proposal. Wrote some testimony for our state legislators, and they decided to take that out of the House version, to actually increase our funding by 0.78%, or $66,000, which is great. However, the House version does away with the formula altogether, so there is no state formula to calculate state aid, they actually put it in language where it prohibits the use of the formula to calculate aid for school districts. They also limit our carryover cash balances to 30% of prior fiscal year's expenditures, I'm gonna spend a lot of time on that one, and basically disrupt our entire local source of revenue. So, we are currently here, the governor submitted his budget, the House passed our version on April 9th, we're currently here, the Senate is considering this version of the budget, so we have to file a five-year forecast by May 31st. We're not gonna know what the Senate wants to do till early June, we're not gonna know what the final version's gonna look like till closer to June 30th, the governor may not even sign until the first week of July, so that's why it's, it's messy. There's a lot of the parts here, a lot could change, the Senate could do a completely different thing than what the House wants to do. What they'll do is they'll pass our version of the budget, send it back to the House, the House will vote against it, they get together in a conference committee, hash out differences, and go from there. So the primary sponsors are Brian Stewart, House Finance Chair, and Speaker Huffman. Brian Stewart is our local rep here in Madison County, so these are the, the two reps that are really responsible for the current state budget. I'm forecasting state revenue to remain flat, so this is where we currently are, this is where the governor's proposal would have had us, so a decline there. The state, the House version gets us a little bit above where we were, not by heck of a lot, I think the state should just assume flat revenues in that source. But then we get to the property tax reform part of the budget, and I do want to say that, you know, there's a reason why the House is including property tax reform in their version of the budget. I'm not gonna sit here and say there's not a problem, and there's nothing, there's no reason for it, it just came out of the blue. Property values have increased substantially over the last several years, there's a lot of reasons for that. Part of it's due to COVID supply chain issues, the cost of construction, inflation, and also the fact that with low interest rates in response to the COVID pandemic, people were able to afford more housing than they otherwise would. So that jacks up, so the sales ratios as being used to help value property. There's a lot of factors here beyond our control, so that's why the House is trying to do something. Last year, they had a whole committee to study the issue, they released a report at the end of December, which didn't say a lot of anything. It basically said there was an issue, here's a couple ideas, but there was no form recommendation, which is why the House is currently trying to have some head legislation to address this issue. We are on what's known as the 20-mill floor for operating levies, so this is a blue bar here, if you noticed, we're out the whole time period, even though our values have gone up, that bar has stayed the same, that's because we're at the lowest legal limit for taxes in, in the state. When, 50 years ago, when the state put together its current property tax system, they put in a measure that would reduce tax rates at, due to property values going up due to inflation. However, they did put a floor on it, so school districts are not reduced down to zero, so that's why we're where we are. So because of that, we have seen increased revenues due to these property values, but that's all in service of teaching our kids, keeping the lights on, getting them here safely. The presentation we saw with the freshmen, with their career fair, you know, we're using it, you know, for the best purposes.
Mark, could you just go back to that previous slide?
Yeah.
And explain, like, in 2013, we're above the 20-mill floor, or higher there than we are right now, could you run through that, the red?
Oh, this is the bond.
Okay.
This is the bond levy. So basically, everything, so this is the bond, this is our permanent improvement, so this shows our effective rates, and the bond and the permanent improvement levies, these all decrease as the value scale.
Yeah, so this point I was making earlier.
Yeah, exactly.
The effective millage people pay goes down as the district grows.
Yeah, so for the bonds, this started out at 8.9 mils, and now we're down, this is an old graph, we're down to 1.5 now. So, I just want to show that, you know, there is a correlation there, but the issue with how the House is proposing to go about this property tax reform, though, is, well, there's a lot of reasons that it's, it's not the right plan. For one is, they introduced this thing on April 1st, they passed it April 9th, so they're trying to redo 50 years of tax law without hearings, without any consideration, and try to do it within a week. One of the issues is, they're looking at our cash balances as of June 30th of each year. This graph is in all of our Word packets, they're all available online. Our lowest month for cash is not June 30th, we're looking at January, February as our lowest cash balance months, which means that...
Why?
Because we did our property tax revenue here in August, we did... Because we get our property tax revenue here in August, we get it here in July, or I'm sorry, in February, March, and then we spend it down. So what happens is, you know, we get an influx of cash, so we have a surplus in those months. Then we start deficit spending it down to pay our, to do our payroll, to do our utilities, buy supplies. So when we get down here, there's about a $4 million difference between our lowest cash month and our highest.
Is that pretty typical among school districts?
It is.
So the month to pick should not be June?
It should not be June, no.
Okay.
We call this the bat wing because, you know, we got to, it goes up and then dips down, goes back up again, so...
So explain to me, Mark, I pay my mortgage every month.
Yes.
And as part of my mortgage, I pay my property taxes every month. Why aren't you getting paid every month?
Because the state distributes twice a year.
I understand that. I don't, I actually pay every six months, but you see my point.
I do.
So that people understand, we have to start, we have to start communicating this to people and why, why, you know, does that make sense?
It does, it does. So, you know, I pay my property taxes in escrow, so it's part of my monthly payment in the House. So what they do is they put money aside into that pot and then the tax bill comes twice a year. They pay it out of that pot and then we build it back up.
The mortgage company does.
The mortgage company does, yep. So some people, they don't do that, they just pay their tax bill when it comes. But either way, the tax bill comes twice a year and the revenues come twice a year. So that's why it just doesn't make sense to look at just June. And then if you're looking at just June as well, it's ignoring the fact that we have encumbrances each fiscal year, which are bills that we incurred, obligations we incurred in one fiscal year that we haven't paid yet. So these will be paid out the following fiscal year. We also have accrued wages and benefits for our staff. So our teachers, they work August through May, but they get paid throughout the whole summer, for months when they're not working. So what happens is we have to still pay that out. They earned it, they owe it, we owe it, but that's not being taken into account either.
Why are we paying them when they're not here?
For a steady income.
But they choose, they choose to take their salary, their salary for nine months and stretch it over...
Over 12.
Over 12. So they reduce what they would get paid during their normal working months so that they have a steady income.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't actually pay them when they're not here?
Right.
Okay.
So every, every, every September, when the first paycheck's hit, we have to explain to every new employee how to read their paycheck because they see how much money they earned and then there's a little deduction for accrual. And that accrual is good put aside so they can get paid in the summer months. And so that's how that works. And also, they also do benefits. I mean, retirement's gets paid out each time there's a payroll. Health insurance does now stop in May. You know, our teachers are also covered in June, July, and August. So that's all money that is being set aside that is not being taken into account by the House. So our true cash balance is somewhere between $2.5 to $3 million less than what they're basing us off of. It's, again, not well thought out. If they've had chances for hearings and testimony, they could hear this from people who live it. When I talked to Representative Richardson last Friday, she had no idea about this. It was news to her for a bill that she voted for.
And what efforts have you made? I mean, you don't have to go into detail on everything, but what efforts have you made to try to educate our legislature?
Yeah, I've submitted written testimony to the House. I have a meeting set up for next week with Senator Reynolds. We also met with her at Tolls a couple of months ago, back when it was just the governor's version of the budget, so before this merger came out. And Dr. Miller and I also met with Representative David Thomas from Ashenbula County. He was at Tolls. He's spearheading a lot of the efforts at the state level, or at the House level, to do proper tax reform. So we've had those conversations. Basically, what it comes down to is Speaker Huffman, this was his baby. He wants to do something. He chooses to his caucus, this is what we're voting on, and that's what they did. And now we're trying to catch up. So modeling the impact of that proposal, because the remedy is if we had too much cash, if we had a higher, over 30% of the cash balance, our property tax revenues would have to be reduced the following year to get us underneath that cap. So that is about $5.4 million in less revenue for next year. And that'll basically get us in a fiscal distress situation by fiscal year 28 because once we have that big dip, we're not going to be able to cash back up. And then our expenditures will continue to increase because of the agreements we signed with our teachers, because of inflation, and just the cost of doing business. Because we still have to have school, we still have to get kids to school, we have to keep the buildings operating. So it's, overall, it's a disaster, so... I just want to point, so anyway, that's why it's just fuzzy. Because everything I'm presenting to the board in this forecast, it could change depending on what the state decides to do. Any other questions on that? So there's a lot of advocacy. I encourage everyone out here, if you're so inclined, to also reach out to your legislators and feel free to ask me questions as well. Again, I don't want to come in and say that nothing should be done about property taxes, but do it in a way that's sustainable, that helps our taxpayers, keeps schools whole in some way, because we still have to operate. But also not lead to situations where, you know, if something like this passes, let's say one year we're over that cap, so the next year your property bill, tax bill goes down because they got to reduce our property tax revenues. We get underneath that cap the next year, well, guess what? Your tax bills are going to go back up because we're underneath that cap. So we're not reduced anymore. So it'd be very hard for our taxpayers to plan for vacations, for home repairs. They don't know what their tax bills are going to be. So anyway, I can go on for a while there. General fund operating expenditures, pretty steady. That's where we're looking at. We are budgeting for additional staff, for enrollment growth. We've had several enrollment studies done. So for every 25 additional students, we're adding a staff member, budgeting for a staff member, I should say. We also have our new collective bargaining agreements in place effective this fall, which will be a 4% base increase for salaries, far by a 3 in a 3. And we also have things like a curriculum adoption, which is on your agenda. That does cost money, so that's all being accounted for here. So, you know, overall, we do try to maintain, keep our expenditures as secure as possible. We don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we're just sitting on cash. We want to make sure we're investing the revenues that we have brought in. We do have income tax that is due to expire December 2026. So keep that on our radar. And that's about it.
Mark, could you go back to the revenue pie chart real quick? Yeah.
The general fund.
The general fund. Yeah, the pie chart.
Forward one.
Go forward one, yeah.
It's stuck.
So really, it's about, would you say, 75% of our revenue goes to staff?
It does.
So what percentage of staff live in our district? Because if there's a lot, that's why you're reinvesting, right, in our community?
That's a good point, it is 58%.
58% of our staff live in our district?
Well, I guess it's going up a little bit for Mr. Lester as well. But yes, 58% of our staff live within the district. So they're paying into our property tax base, our income tax base. If they live in Plain City or they work at Plain City Elementary, they're paying the village income tax as well, to support their roads and their parks and their services. You know, so it is an investment in our community. And we won't be here without our staff to provide the educational opportunities for our students. We saw the benefits of it with our top-ranked pharmacy student and the freshmen that were up here. Just look around, this is what, that's where the money goes. When I get asked, where does our tax money goes? It goes into H and every child that walks through our doors. It goes into our graduates who've gone through our programs, who are now contributing to the workforce or the military or in college. It's an investment that continues to grow as our community continues, grows as well. And people, you know, they go get college, they get a good job, they start families. That's where it goes, that's what we're continuing to do.
Mark, do you have any idea how the 58% would compare to other districts? Is that higher than most districts, lower, comparable?
I would say it's higher. Definitely higher.
Carlos, do you know what?
Carlos says yes.
I don't, but I would just, from like my building that I was a principal in, 58% would be much higher than what I was used to having, you know, living in the community where the building was. So I don't know, Dr. Miller, if you have the same.
Not 58% in Southwest, right?
All right, can you go forward one slide for me, please? Uh, one more, right there. Can you explain to me, and I apologize, I probably should have prefaced, I probably should have given you a heads up on this question, but, and you don't necessarily have to answer it, it's just something to think about. So can you explain to me, if you look back, if you look over the trajectory, right? We've seen all of, we've seen, we've seen a ton of houses, of new homes go in and new businesses go in.
Right.
Why is, why is our cash balances not going up dramatically to account for that?
Yeah, so that's a good question.
Like, what are you doing with the money?
So that's a good question, first of all. So we have seen increase in property tax revenue due to new construction, 9% this past year. For instance, you know, with the new developments coming on to their tax rolls, as well as the new commercial developments that are coming online. So what we have been doing is saving for the future. So we have a capital fund set aside that would can be used for our roofing projects, which we have on the agenda, our paving projects, we also need water sewer upgrades while we're here. So in these times, we need to start saving for the future, so that's coming off of our fund balance. But also, our expenditures are outpacing the increased revenue that we're seeing from property tax. So it's, while the property tax revenues are increasing, it's not increasing as fast as our expenditures. So again, we're using this opportunity to, after 10 years of austerity, essentially, to get back to where we could be. We're elevating in every area, and that includes bringing on more staff to better serve our students. We're also are trying to save, get a save for the future with our severance fund. So for retiring employees, when they retire, they know that we have money set aside for their benefits when they, for when they're ready to go. And also, we can save for any unexpected costs, so...
$220,000 to pave the parking lot?
Yes.
$120,000 to fix the skylight in the high school?
Yes.
One skylight?
One skylight.
Well, the skylight area.
Just so our community knows what some of the expenses are. Like, to seal your driveway at home is $750. To pave our parking lot here, it's $220,000.
That's not the whole parking lot, that's just a section of a parking lot. And that was the lowest bid.
Yeah. Yeah, and the roof, the roofing project came in under budget, but it was $162?
Yes, it was.
So it's not just the everyday running of the school district. There's, there's huge expenses that come up and sometimes haven't been dealt with in the past because the money hasn't been there in the past, so then it comes up now.
Yes.
So there is no way to really avoid having a savings without sending the school district at some level and at some point in time into disrepair. Because you have to spend big chunks, it's like living in a house. And all of a sudden, your water heater goes out, or you can't just leave it out.
Right.
What's a new bus cost?
$172,000, $175,000, just for one bus. It was $100,000 when I first started my career as a treasurer.
And we need to purchase one or two every year to stay up.
Why?
Enrollment and the buses that, you know, buses 21, 22, 23, 24, 25 that are over 10 years old, 15 years old.
Sorry, Bill. It costs more to maintain those buses than it's worth.
We're asking these questions for the sake of everyone else that's listening that doesn't automatically know, understand and know these things. Just, yeah.
So, so with the new houses that are going in, why can't you use the property tax and the income tax from these expensive developments to pay? I'm being, I'm, this is a serious question.
No, I know you're, why you're asking.
Why can't you, why can't you use the money that's coming in from them to build the schools? Why are we asking for a bond? Why don't you just use the money that, from the growth that's coming in to pay for the new building?
So in order to pay for the building in cash, again, just cash, not borrowing, using just the revenue from new construction, it will cost, it will take us about 70 years to save up for it.
How many?
70.
The plan probably wouldn't work in 70 years.
No, so it'd be about 70 years, so I'd be 110. By the time we have enough money to save up for it, that does not include inflation, you know? We have to keep that in mind, too. And we also, if we're going to borrow, which will, most prudent way of doing it, we do have to get voter approval to borrow that amount of funds because it will be over our debt limits. We can't just target certain developments.
Why can't, why don't you just make the new developments pay the bond?
Because, it goes against tax law. It is a uniformed system of taxation. If you look at Article 12 of the Ohio Constitution, we can't just target certain developments for payment. It has to be a universal tax rate across all types, all similar property. So that's why we can't just target them.
Why don't you make the developers pay for it?
I just don't think that would lead to any development. I don't know how they could possibly, because they're in a profit motive, right? They're a profit-fronted business. If you're asking them to upfront pay for a $70 million building project, I don't see how they're making back their costs, they're not going to make that investment.
Great, then we won't have any development.
Could you make them if you wanted to?
Yeah, but even if we wanted to, do we have authority to ask?
We don't.
I think you guys should credit Facebook not portray these questions as your own.
Yeah.
For attribution's sake.
These are legitimate, these are legitimate questions.
All things we've heard.
Yes, and these, I'm just busting your chops, but I think these are things that we should address.
Yeah, and we will, we will.
What's that?
We will address them.
Can you accept donations?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. We'll gladly accept donations and help.
Even directed donations, we would take a donation for a building fund?
Yeah, or auditorium.
Or an auditorium, sure, absolutely.
I just read that Bill Gates is giving up his entire wealth system, so maybe someone can get on his radar.
Write a letter.
Right.
So can I make a couple of comments? Mr. Ingles, one, I want to thank you and I wanted to emphasize to the board. Things come to my office every day about can we purchase this? Then I try to decipher whether it's wants or needs and how does it impact our students. I go back to always the teaching and the learning department because we have great ideas from our leaders and I go back to Mr. Ingles and say, how does this impact us? Does this value, does this bring enough value to make the purchase? And you can see with how he does his tracking, his spreadsheets, and can show me, yes, we can do it now, or not yet, or we make a determination that it doesn't bring the value. So there's that piece. Secondly, I wanted to just remind the board what an incredible position that we're in because of negotiations that took place in the fall. There are districts that are surrounding us right now because of the complication of what the state is doing, that there's turmoil between the teachers negotiating with the administrators. We feel like we reached a fair contract with our teachers and we have that behind us and we've built these relationships and we can move on with that and we don't have to spend our time, energy, and emotions through negotiations this spring. So that's another thing to think about, that we're such in a good position right now.
Yeah, it's great.
Thanks to the...
Mr. Ingles, thank you very much for the report.
You did a great, you did a great job.
Thank you, Mark.
Answering a bunch of questions that you weren't prepared for.
If there's any question, any further questions, feel free to reach out to me, email or phone. The fiber forecast, turn someone else out of the room here. Fiber forecast document will be available online under the community section in the treasurer webpage. You can find a whole host of information, but I'm always happy to talk things through, so.
Thank you very much. Do we have a lot more public participation now that Mr. Ingles has spoken?
Okay.
Excellent. Okay. I also just wanted to say, I, as a board, we really appreciate everything you're doing to try to explain both to us and to the legislature the upsides and the downsides. I think it's very, some of this stuff seems like a great idea. But when you start to parse it out and you put it, and you put it to test, there's a lot of unintended consequences. And really, what you're, what you've been trying to communicate is the specific unintended consequences for our community. consequences for our community, and to show them in the most basic way you possibly can. And I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely is complicated issues, and, you know, I do think there's ways to accomplish their goals, but also not, you know, leave us out. You know, I didn't even mention the fact that, that cash balance proposal, it only applies to public schools. So it's very apparent what, essentially what they're being tar, that we're being targeted. And, because we're not the only tax jurisdiction here. Fire, there's fire departments, there's police levies, county levies, Plain City Village has a property tax levy, counties, townships, they're not impacted by that whatsoever.
Nobody else has to, nobody else is impacted by the thirty percent carryover?
Yes, yes. So it's just public schools, so. Granted, we see the majority of the funds, but we're not the only ones. So, again, it's something that we're in touch with, and got a meeting with Senator Reynolds next week, um, looking forward to it, she's already heard from me before, and Senator Ryan Key is, current, his office gonna schedule a meeting with the county treasurers, I haven't heard back yet when that's happening.
Yeah, and thank, thank you for letting me tag along to your meeting with Senator Reynolds, too, I think, um, the more that they see people, the faces of people from the communities, and learn, the better chance we have of getting something that is actually workable.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the treasurer's report, section eight, can I get a motion to approve the April twenty-twenty-five financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, uh, roll call?
All right, uh, Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It makes sense why you're confused, that five-year forecast is on there twice.
I know. We're gonna prove it now, we got to do it as a presentation, now we're gonna prove it. Can I get a motion to approve the five-year forecast, uh, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the, uh, following grants and donations? Six hundred and ninety-six from an anonymous donation to Canaan Middle School Camp Fund for scholarships, and fifteen hundred from Gina Reiser, is it Reiser or Reiser?
Reiser?
Reiser.
Reiser? Okay, for negative lunch balances.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Always thankful for the generous support of our community.
Definitely. Ms. Reiser, I, Reiser?
Reiser.
Reiser? I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, but thank you very, very much, and thank you for the anonymous donation, too, for the Canaan Middle School Camp Fund. Roll call?
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to eight point oh four, can I get a motion to approve the amended appropriations and certificate of estimated resources as presented?
So moved. A second.
So really quick explanation, um, general fund increase, partly for, um, higher than expected purchase services throughout the year, as driven in part by special education needs and services and our facility repairs, um, but also, um, also putting aside more money for our severance fund, which, um, did some calculations, we need to top that off with, based on what we, who may retire in the next couple of years, um, so top that off, and also put aside more funds for our capital improvements, um, especially with our wa, water and wastewater plants, um, at the, all the buildings except for Plain City, which is on a municipal system. And then federal grants, we have some additional allocations that were received in April after our board meeting. We are using these grants mostly to fund additional personnel, that doesn't hit our general fund, trying to be responsible, trying to use these the best we can, um, and so we're just appreciative, we got some extra funds, it's not a lot, but it's something.
Okay, great. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to section nine, um, can I get a motion to approve the employment and personal consent items, including nine point oh one resignations, nine point oh two employment, uh, nine point oh three revised classified salary schedule, nine point oh four job descriptions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I was wondering about, is this the supplementals, or is that the next? There was a supplemental for a coffee shop?
So Erica Flogger at the junior high, Rick Kitchen at the high school, out of their resource rooms, they're teaching the students to be able to run a, a coffee shop, making the, the purchases with stocked coffee, put the orders out to the staff, make deliveries or staff come in, and we are asking for the board to approve this advisor position, even though it's volunteered, so that they can handle the cash transactions through this program.
That's cool, so it's for the staff? Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know some, we heard freshmen proposing to have like, you know, some kind of coffee shop or store or something down by the cafeteria and the snack bar area, and I thought, oh, maybe they.
This is only for staff, right, at this point?
For board members and anybody who.
Yeah, great.
It's not a paysal model, like, it just kind of allows them to handle the money.
Right, I get it, I just didn't know what that was when I saw it, so.
Well, maybe it can grow.
Yeah.
I'll share that, uh, Mr. Lester's bridge contract is not something that we would typically do, we're usually hiring someone July first or August first, um, but in this particular situation, I thought it'd be best to get him in as soon as possible to help us and learn how you close down a regular school year, spend some time with, uh, Mr. Fennick, a lot of time with me, time with Mr. Ingles, the lawyer Robbins, and Misty Graber, and the principals, so that when he's closing the school year down with us next year, it, it's not new, and he's not starting July first or August first, learning everyone's names and, and building the relationships he's already established through this, the end of this school year, so, I'm glad you're here. The fifty-four day bridge contract, and then he'll start his two-year contract on August first, that's great.
Um, just briefly, revised classified salary schedule, that's the same as was approved the last time, except for we added a column for maintenance technician, um, in the past, it was custodians were responsible for grounds and maintenance and top of their custodial duties, so now we separated that out, so, try to recognize the different responsibilities.
Not, not a new position, but it was the restructure that I've been sharing with the board under that maintenance department.
I just want to say, Eric and I came from a technology meeting, um, prior to this meeting, and I just want to say how impressed I was, uh, Mrs. Byers, with the integration and the detail you and your team engage in, Nicole Strach engages in, it's just super impressive to see that you have a plan for our students from kindergarten all the way through, um, grade twelve, listening to the four students here who went out on a field trip, like, I'm just, I'm envious sitting here, like, nobody ever approached me in high school about career opportunities and stuff, and I'm just amazed how, um, you guys integrate the Think Big space, you made a remark in your meeting that, this was the, one of the best things I heard in the meeting was that, you said something to the effect of our kids are not afraid to fail at something, and I think that's so important, like, kids don't have, uh, that develops self-confidence, where you can fail at something and then learn how to conquer it, and I know they do that because of the way you guys encourage them and challenge them, so I just want to say, and I, uh, just how impressed I was by the content of the meeting today, and congratulate you on your new position.
Great. Anything additional? Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Got it.
Okay, moving on to section ten, Tolls Report, Mr. McCartney?
Yeah, so, big highlights for, uh, for you are, the certification ceremony is May nineteenth and twentieth at seven P M., if, uh, you happen to be available, we'll invite you. Thank you to everybody that was able to attend the Associate School Board Dinner, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I know that's always a great time. We currently have nine hundred and seventeen students that have been accepted into Level One or senior-only programs, uh, combined with the students that'll be returning next year, uh, we expect record enrollment at Tolls next year is an astounding number. We're moving forward with the construction project, uh, it's, get, we're, we're getting to the final stages, uh, to be ready to break ground.
Nice.
Okay, um, moving on to old business, uh, we are now under a second reading for the, um, policy revisions that I, Bruce and I went over in detail at the last meeting, so unless anybody has any questions, we're gonna skip that detailed presentation about the policy revisions.
Were there a couple of things that you were gonna come back to, about, back to us about, do you remember?
I thought there were a couple, I was just thinking that, too.
Prior to that, there were, but we resolved them at the last meeting, so.
I trust you guys.
Yeah, okay, and, um, I, I'm having a glitch right now, we don't need to vote on the policy second reading? They automatically take a vote, I think we do.
We do.
There's a roll call for it. There is?
That's for this.
We have the academic calendar, too.
Go back one page.
Whole business, right here.
Okay, um, so, can I get a motion to approve the policy revisions after today's second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we're also under a second reading for the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar, um, did anybody have any quest, well, can I get a motion to approve the second reading and therefore enact the, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great. I just want to say, I'm really glad that graduation is being moved back to Memorial Day weekend, that's great.
Too late for us, though.
Yeah. But I don't have any, I think it's great, I'm fine with the calendar the way it is. Okay? Roll call?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, okay, moving on to new business, uh, can I get a motion to approve the resolution regarding the proposed state budget, House Bill ninety-six?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, does, does anybody have questions why we're doing this as a board?
I think it's a great move on our part, I think it's something we should be doing.
And Mark, do you want to just give a brief?
Yeah, so this is.
What the resolution says?
So the resolution, do you want me to read the whole resolution or summarize it? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, please don't.
So the resolution before the board is to show, uh, the board's disagreement with the House budget as presented currently, um, it is asking for the General Assembly to preserve local financial control by supporting districts' rights to maintain appropriate cash balances by eliminating any limitation on carryover funds, so that ensures that we can effectively plan, manage and operate with the flexibility needed to best serve our communities, and to maintain the existing funding formula, updated inputs as it was intended to run, once you're in growing districts, do not lose funding. So again, we're a growing district, we don't want to lose funding with the state budget, so, this is what the resolution is for, um, I intend to present, um, the resolution, once approved, to both our state senators and both our state representatives, and Brittany Cop, already provided a copy to, um, Representative Richardson last week, I'll have a copy for Senator Reynolds next week as well. We're not the only school board to do this, or, I've never seen the level of advocacy against the issue as I have seen for this budget, um, so we're definitely not the only ones, and just as many voices as possible to craft a budget bill that's fair to taxpayers and schools.
So basically, it's a way for this board to speak on behalf of this district to our legislature?
So, so Mark, I have a question, real quick. Would there be any value in sending it, since, uh, Governor DeWine can do a line item veto, I mean, is there a value in sending this to the governor's office as well?
I think it wouldn't hurt, definitely wouldn't hurt, um, so we don't know what the final product's gonna look like.
We don't know, but at least we can get in front of them.
Yes.
Are you gonna, is Mr. Jester gonna push this out on social media, and with actions our community could take to support the district in this endeavor?
Yeah, we, we could, we draft this, we have something drafted, you know, we gotta work on it, and, you know, we're talking about a complicated issue, um, but it's something that I've seen other schools do as well, I know Hilliard, where my kids go to school, they pushed something out recently, so, it's definitely something we can, we can push out.
Roll call?
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, okay, the next two new items, we already briefly discussed, um, can I get a motion to approve the enclosed paving contract from Tolliver and Curl, paving for two hundred and twenty thousand, um, the high school lot?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and this was the, um, lowest bid?
With the two-inch removal of the surface.
Yes.
They're taking away the, the top two inches and then reinstalling it, and we're trying to be strategic on this, once a junior high, you know, there's construction and equipment happening here, we don't want to pay for a brand-new, blacktop surface, so let's do some patches and repairs here, replace everything, the surface on everything else, and, um, this company basically was able to put it together, the best package for us.
Okay, so, um, we are not putting a brand-new parking lot over the entire campus? Okay. Okay, roll call?
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Duttweiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wotah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the enclosed roofing repair contract for a hundred and sixty-two thousand, from six hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Cotterman and Company for the high school gymnasium roof?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, I've, I've been in that gym with a leaking roof and buckets around the floor, and it's problematic, particularly when you think of the danger that it could cause to kids who are running around that gym floor. So.
Can I make a comment on that as well? So, remember our restructure with Mr. Bennett is hands-on with these types of improvement projects, he's up on the roof, taking video evidence, using dampness detectors, bringing the, you know, the video evidence, and we're looking how he's pressing on the rubber seal, and it can see dampness between the rubber seal and the ceiling underneath, so just think of over time how much additional damage, or maybe even mold, so to tackle this now, that's why I'm asking for the board to approve this, and as Mrs. Walker said, we've had games where it's actually been somewhat embarrassing to put a, a bucket out in the middle of a game to catch the drips, so, our kids deserve better than that.
Is there, is there, I mean, the sixty-two thousand is not a number to, that's a, that's a huge percentage of this project, are we confident that Cotterman and Company is going to complete the repairs as necessary, because I know that roofing has been the bane of this district's existence for the last thirty years, um, I don't want to spend a hundred I don't want to spend $162,000 to save 10 if we're not going to get it done right.
Joe spent hours and hours with each individual contractor and manager and felt confident that this was the best direction.
I talked to Joe, and I have full confidence that he's vetted. He understands the process and what it needs and what it takes, and he's...
So, could there be additional work to the roof following this repair?
Absolutely. This is just over the gymnasium area. There's two more...
Right, I meant over the gym. Like, is the gym... Does the $162,000 completely fix the gym roof? Or could they get in there and find additional problems? I guess that's...
It's always a potential, and you're dealing with building stuff. There's always a potential.
They're not literally removing the roof and putting a whole new thing in.
No, this is... There's probably 20 years of patch repair, rubber seal, epoxy, and caulking. This is to reseal with one rubber seal across the top.
Okay.
So, yes, they will get in there. They will find more damage. We'll have to have more work done, but this is what we feel is, you know, using the technology that they do now, they sold their work to us that they can get it done.
Yeah.
And it does come with a two-year warranty.
So, if they do the work...
We would know right away.
And then February rolls around, and we have leaking gym again. Then that's covered under that warranty. There's a manufacturer warranty on the material they're being used, a 20-year warranty.
Okay.
And Trunko, who is the manufacturer, will do a two-year, five-year, and 15-year warranty checks. So, you know, we'll be covered if something does... If we do this project and it doesn't work as well, at least we have the warranties in place. And there's two other sections of the roof where if this goes well, you know, that we're considering to do as well. Same process, not complete replacement, but the other two sections of the flat section of the roof could also use some attention as well, Mr. Lester. So...
We're going to be busy this summer.
And we went through, you know, competitive bidding process, and this is where it came out. They'll be using the same process as being used at Ford Field in Detroit with their roof. And so, overall, we, you know, speaking for Dr. Miller and myself, we feel confident.
Good.
Great.
Can you just tell us... So, all of this is being paid out of the capital projects funds?
Yes.
What was the balance prior to this and what will the balance be after?
So, we transferred $2 million last year to the capital improvement funds, which was earmarked for demolition of 340 West Main, which we're still waiting on a bill for, by the way. We got this project. We also have the paving project for the high school. The skylight project. Window replacement at Monroe Elementary. And I'm drawing a blank. Carpet replacement at Plain City. So, we have earmarked the full $2 million that was transferred last year for various projects. And I'll get you a listing after this meeting. And then...
Man, it all adds up quick, doesn't it?
It really does. And, you know, we're expecting reimbursement through that grant for the 340 West Main demolition, which, once received, then we can earmark another important project.
This is... This is conversations I've had with Mr. Lester as well. This... We shouldn't be in a position where we have to do everything at once. It should be just like your forecast, a five-year operational forecast. And let's rotate these, you know, expensive projects accordingly and by priority. So, he understands that, and that's going to be on his priority list.
Yeah. And what I just described, too, that's not all happening next year. It's all spread out. So, you know, again, we're... I'll work with Mr. Lester, you know, have a nice five-year forecast ready. I do have one made up for, you know, what we're going to be using, a general fund, permanent improvement fund, or building replacement repair fund, or O-70 Capital Projects Fund.
So, the grant was going to be like 400-ish or 350?
305, I think.
305?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that'll refill that a little bit. Is there a plan in your five-year forecast to put more money back into that capital improvement fund?
There is.
How much?
Another just hair over $2 million again this year, mostly earmarked for land purchase. The 12 acres here at this property. There is also potential...
Initial conversation.
Initial conversation at Plain City for additional land. So, if we're... If the price is right and you're ready to pull the trigger, we have the funds set aside. But talking to Mr. Bennett this past week, we have, and I'm just during this meeting getting some quotes, which, you know, I'm sure Mr. Lester has as well, of the needed repairs at our water and wastewater systems here at the junior... High school, junior high, Canaan, and Monroe. We're reaching a switch operator record for the service, and we have... We don't have a good estimate yet of how much that's going to be, but we're expecting quite a few hundred thousand dollars to get things where they should have been a long time ago.
We can't just milk that along until water...
It's been...
Until water syrup comes out?
You know, if we don't want to lose the water pressure every once in a while and, you know, we want to make sure that we're complying with the EPA, it's something that we definitely need to do.
Don't want EPA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, roll call.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotow?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Houli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettweiler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Still want to be here, Mr. Lester?
I'm getting... Feeling more and more grateful for that bridge contract.
Yes, for sure.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the enclosed proposal for quality well... Quality walls and windows to repair the high school skylight for $121,680 and declare an urgent necessity per Ohio Revised Code 3313.46?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, the work is classified as an urgent necessity due to safety concerns associated with the skylights.
We also have blind company even willing to take on the project. So, it was something that was advertised along with the high school gymnasium roof. Due to the nature of the construction, how things... Obviously, I can't... I'm not the type of person to explain how it is, but they're the only company that was willing to do it, to provide a warranty on the work as well.
Okay.
Which is important for us because we tried all kinds of fixes. It just didn't work, but none of it was covered by a warranty, so we kept our money out of the problem.
And this company gave us two options. One was to replace the sealant and caulking that is there now, but I believe that's already been done in the past. But that was without a warranty. This is replace everything in between the skylights with a 10-year warranty.
Great.
Good.
I tend to think this predates everybody here, but is there a short answer as to why it was not fixed from the very beginning if it leaked from the very beginning? Does anybody know? Like, if you're on the board, right?
I've been here about 15-plus years, and it's always... It's always leaked. I mean, honestly, back in 2008, I was told recently by a custodian that it's been leaking since 2008.
Well, the building opened in, what, 2006?
So...
Mr. Lester, these are questions you're not going to have to answer in 15 years. It will have been done, right?
So, out of the O-70 fund, we're initially... We're budgeting about $300,000 for both roof repairs here. And these two projects combined gives us underneath that budgeted amount, so it's a good deal.
Great. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Houli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettweiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotow?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Section 12.05, can I get a motion to approve the resolution to enter into the expedited local partnership program with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission?
He's around here somewhere.
So moved.
We didn't get this information until about an hour and a half ago or two hours ago.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Ingalls dove into it a little bit. Is Josh here? I thought he was back there.
He's around there. Did I get a second?
No, we didn't get a second. I'll second.
Anyone? Okay. Thanks.
So, why are we entering into an agreement when we just failed a bond levy?
Mr. Predovich, want to take that one?
I'll come up.
I know the answer.
We know you did.
You know the answer, but you want to hear it out loud. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come in and answer some questions. The entering into the expedited local partnership program, what this allows you to do is to start basically using any funds that will be applied to expenditures for a future project. You can start co-funding those dollars. And so, what we're doing is we're building credit right now, right? In the ELF program, the district leads with 100% local share. And we're building credit against that future state share. So, if you take a look at the resolution in front of you, you'll see the listing of the $17 million in state share that we're hoping to garner as part of this project. And so, things that are applicable, for instance, if we do site investigations, right? If we do geotechnical or surveying or any other types of sort of site investigations, that would be applicable. Those are all things that we would do in advance of the project actually starting. And so, we're trying to speed up your ability to get to those co-funded opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Stettweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Houli?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotow?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
12.06, can I get a motion to approve the curriculum adoptions as presented?
So moved. A second.
Carla, do you want to... I mean, we've... Yeah. We've... This is the social studies and the science six-year adoption of Teachers Curriculum Institute for grades 5 through 12 and SAVIS for grades 5 through 12, which we've discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy to share any information or answer any questions, but as we discussed, we had multiple teachers and our administrators on the curriculum adoption team. Staff members have been using these two programs that they tried out, the new additions, and looked at the materials and felt really strongly that these were the best materials out there and most aligned to the Ohio learning standards. And so, you know, after a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings that we had with our science and social studies curriculum teams, we are recommending that we continue with SAVIS for science in grades 5 to 12 and with the TCI program and social studies for grades 5 through 12.
Great. Thank you for all your work on it, and I'm sure you're relieved to have this finally before the board tonight. Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Houli?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the enclosed contract for services from the ESC of Central Ohio for fiscal year 2026?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay.
And this is just a... Entering into contract with the ESC of Central Ohio, which were required?
Yes. As a requirement to... For them to upload to the state. It does include the scope of work of the type of services we'll be getting from them, but it's just to officially align with them.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Houli?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotow?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettweiler?
Yes.
And motion passes.
Okay. Now, moving on to the... Our discussions regarding the bond issue and our next steps. I know we've talked about it a little bit at the beginning of the meeting. Does everybody seem... Is everybody okay with holding an informational session with the community, at least one?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. I mean, I would probably recommend two, in all honesty. I think we have to have one where we listen to everybody and try to understand from those who voted no. But then I think we also need one with what are... What are we going to offer? What's our next approach going to be?
Okay.
It would probably be more in the September timeframe.
Okay.
But I think it'd be good to have one soon.
What's the statutory deadline, Mark? If we wanted to go back on in November?
The state consent special needs part one filing deadline is July 7th. Part two deadline is July 29th. Board of Elections filing deadline, August 6th.
Can you explain what those mean, please?
So, state consent special needs... Trying to think back to when we just did this last fall. It is to requesting permission to ask for... Basically, to exceed our debt limitation by putting on a bond issued to the front of our voters. So, we exceed our 0.1% of our total valuation in debt. We need special consent from the Ohio Department of Taxation and Ohio Department of Education to do so. So, that's part one. And then part two is a separate filing... Is a separate filing, basically, where we need to have our auditor's certification of estimated mileage. I was going to bring in...
That's July 29th?
That's July 29th. Yep. And we'll need our auditor's certification, our board resolution asking the auditor to provide the estimate. We'll need our special consents for part one and part two filings, and our resolution of necessity to go to the Board of Elections by August 6th to get on the ballot.
Okay. So, here's my... So... If we... So, by July 1st, do we have to know... By July 29th, we definitely have to know how much the project's going to be? Do we have to know how much the project's going to be by July 1st? Or do we only have to know whether we're going on in November by July 1st?
So, yeah, we'll need to know... I got to look at the filings again, what exactly was asked for for state consents. If I remember correctly, it was our... It was asking our current indebtedness in terms of where we are.
Okay.
And then we'll have to...
Do you know, Mr. Predovich, off the top of your head?
I think I've always understood that you need to have the full project amount for the first file.
Yeah.
I believe it's correct, so...
The first... So, we have to know by July 1st?
Yeah, correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I've always understood.
Thank you.
So, we need a... We need a plan, which means we need to speak to the community.
Quickly.
Quickly.
Yep.
So, early June?
Yes.
Yeah. After graduation.
Are you going to be able to get two meetings in June?
Why two?
Well, one to hear...
And then a work session?
And then two to...
Isn't there a way that we can hear from them before, like, have people submit? And we already know quite a number, just in talking the other day. And we already know quite a number, just in talking the other day, we have quite a number of questions that we can get the answers to now.
Yeah.
And have them submit things, you know, the week of or whatever, so that we can meet.
So kind of do it, kind of do like a listening session, and the only thing is, the only problem with that is, don't you need their feedback to come up with a plan? So how do, it's going to be, in my mind, it's just difficult to, it's difficult to just read feedback from a, from a cert, because we're effectively talking like a survey or people submitting things via email. And then if we were going to say June, whatever, June 7th, have a meeting that you're responding to those things and presenting a plan and soliciting feedback from that plan, I just feel like that's a lot to happen.
I didn't necessarily think we would have the plan ready when we meet with people. We would use that to develop our plan, but the plan developing doesn't have to necessarily be in a public forum. Once we've had the public meeting and we can discuss and ask, answer questions and, because I think a lot of the questions exist regardless of what our plan is. We can answer a lot of them without the number of, this is the amount we're asking.
We can select a date now or tomorrow, this week sometime, for any day that the board decides and start announcing it every day. Here is the agenda, this is what it's for, here's how you submit, advance questions.
Yeah, I think you're right. That's what we do. And then repeat questions, just get boiled down. We can have the responses to the ones we can, and then we'll still.
Well, I think what Steve was saying was, from that, the results from the first meeting to then have a second meeting.
As we present our approach for.
In September.
In September.
Oh, in September.
Right before the vote.
Before the vote, yes.
So that it's fresh, because there will be people.
We still may have to have a work session.
I misunderstood, okay.
But I also think, before we go too far, I really believe we've got to talk to the pack who did all this work and get what they thought went well, what didn't go well. It's not just about our questions, but we have a lot of folks working on this, and they might have some insights this time that might help us craft a better message, or there might be some things we didn't do that we could do better. So I think it's really a series of means. I think we have to meet with our pack and get their feedback as well.
Well, that can happen with.
That can happen anytime.
And that would also not be public.
And we can't, yeah, that can't be the entire board unless we were to be at a, make it an official board meeting.
Well, but you have, but you have two board members on the pack that could, that could meet with the pack.
Are the two board members who are on the pack also not the ones having graduating seniors this year?
Yes. Thank goodness.
Excellent. Boy, I'm so glad the way that worked out.
I've already sent a message to the pack over the weekend. If I didn't have your personal email, that should have been forwarded to you, letting them know that we're going to reengage right away after this board meeting, after we can hear from, from you. But I'm ready to arrange something with them this week or next week to make sure that everyone's on board and see if I can gain any information from them to share with, with you, and that will help us steer the, the agenda for our special board meeting or the
And to circle back to what you were asking, Mr. McCartney, we will need to know the project amount to pass the first resolutions.
On July 1st.
Yeah.
By, by July 1st.
Yeah, July 7th is the filing deadline, so we'll need to move pretty quickly.
So what's everyone's availability like the week of June 9th?
Two nights.
Good.
It's a good week for me.
It's good for me, too.
It's good for me, too.
I forgot my phone, but I can really.
It's going to be good for Bruce.
Right. And then what time, what time, what time do you guys think is a good time to hold an open community forum? We need input.
Seven, I was thinking seven, but is seven a good time? Is that right in the middle of dinner and?
Two, no.
No, six is in the middle of dinner. Some kids are going to bed. But five or six is too early, right?
But not June.
Five or six, 6:30?
Clint, what do you think?
This all hinges on you, bud.
Time.
Six, six, six or seven. It's like, like June, you got to have kids at the ballpark, and I mean, it's just.
Vacations.
Right.
It's a crazy time.
Well.
But I'm like, if it's not, if it's after, it's something you guys should know is if our baseball team and softball team, track team go far, the tournaments go way into June this year.
Right.
That's true, too.
All the states not until the 14th, 15th.
Would Craig know when those games would potentially be?
Yeah, I mean, the brackets are out, aren't they?
They know which nights, so we can make sure it's not.
They're all, they're all on, they go like Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, so a Tuesday.
Rein change.
Not later.
I think we better.
Potentially earlier in the week.
What if we said, what if we said like?
Communicate by email, look and see what all's going on, then.
The ninth to the 11th, ninth to the 11th, and pick the day that doesn't, that's not conflicting with any of our potential.
Is, is the week before, the only reason I don't want to run out of time, is the week before out for anyone, so that that gives us the week of the ninth through 12th to be making some decisions and gathering information?
It's kind of out.
Oh, it is kind of out, okay.
I got a couple. It's kind of out. If I had to do it, I could, towards the end of the week, but then that might run into baseball.
Do we want to shoot for like June 10th or June 11th, and then we'll circle around, hear from Mr. Houli that that's okay on your schedule? We'll tentatively say those two evenings.
June 9th or 10th?
10th or 11th?
10th or 11th.
9th or 10th.
Or the ninth, that's a Monday.
9th, 10th or 11th?
Yeah, 9th or 10th.
Because there's not, there's not a considerable difference between the fifth and the sixth or the ninth and the 10th. Or there is for you? No.
And, and it would be a board meeting, so it would be recorded. We can also have access to a lot of questions in advance and be able to answer those, too, so that if anybody isn't able to attend, they could at least, Tyler, you could probably put the questions at the bottom of the screen after the fact to make it easier for people who want to like page through and see, okay. So we can make it as user-friendly as possible and informational as possible. We can learn as much as we possibly can and open it up. Are we going to have it here?
Either auditorium or the gym.
Or the gym. But I don't think we have to decide that location yet. Maybe we can start getting, hearing about what the engagement might look like to determine the setup.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great.
You could send out RSVPs.
Well, you could just say, are you interested in coming?
Yeah, sure.
Advertise it, try to use many sources.
Yeah. But that gives us enough time to get information from the district out to the community at large.
Okay.
So we'll talk about and finalize a date in the next couple of days.
Okay, I'll send something to everyone so we can all confirm in writing that we're good on one of those three dates, ninth, 10th, or 11th.